Let's stand for the pledge, please. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Mike.
Hi, Mike.
Kristen, can you go through and give us introduction of all present, please?
Yes, let's see. Oh, here we go. Sorry, I'm letting some other people in. Hi, everyone. My name's Kristen. This evening, members in attendance, we have Mike Beecher, John Malcolm, Bob Jones, Jessica Vanort, and Rich Hewlett. Others in attendance, I'm just going to roll through the names that you have presented on your Zoom account. So if you want to clarify who you are, if it's not completely clear, you're welcome to do so. Otherwise, you'll just need to make sure to indicate your name prior to speaking this evening. So we have Kristen Powers. We have Paul and Michelle Tullander, Ray Duquette, Beth Moser Duquette, Sarah Post, we have Doreen, Frank Nelson, Rhonda Schlangen, Maureen Brown, Dan Brooks, Joy Proft, Jennifer Sullivan, Nancy Morlino, Keith Mason, Mara Hurst, Olivia McChesney, John Sabatka. We have a Jennifer. Julie Mack looks like an iPad 8 and an iPad Q are here. Ruth Lampy is also coming in. If you want to, you can just send a message to me directly if you want to clarify your name. And that is all we have. Thank you, everybody, for coming.
Okay. Any additions or deletion of the agenda items tonight, Kristen?
Yes, so this is Kristen. Oh, yeah, just friendly reminder, everybody. So these meetings are recorded for the purpose of tag TV. So just everybody be mindful. We have a couple pre-requested appearances by local citizens and visitors. Those folks get a little bit longer time. Everybody else, when you're selected on to speak, if you haven't requested to do so, the rules of procedure request that you speak for about a minute or two. So just be mindful of that. Additions this evening, Julie Mack and Rhonda Schlangen have requested to be under appearances by local citizens and visitors. There was a town hall auditorium use inquiry for this summer, and I suggest that be discussed under new business. On the agenda that was distributed, I had put Wi-Fi concerns under new business. That actually needs to be corrected to cellphone concerns. That was requested to be discussed during the last meeting, but we didn't quite get to it. And another item for new business was operating norms and meeting expectations was a topic that was sent to me that I thought could be interesting for the board to talk about as well. So those were the official requests. We did get a series of emails between this past meeting and tonight. So if any folks who emailed but didn't request to officially be on the agenda wanted to bring something up, I believe the time for that would be during public comment. I think that's all.
Okay, that sounds good.
I see Jessica has her hand raised.
Yes, I have a few things to be, I have a few things to report back from last time. I don't know if those should be in old business. I have an update about the public Wi-Fi in West Pollet. And I have an update about, I contacted Vermont League of Cities and Towns about inclusion statements. So I have an update on that.
I would say old business is where that would continue the conversations. Okay, approval of the minutes from the previous meeting?
This is Jessica.
I'm with everybody.
Minutes.
Does anybody have any second or any comments to make about the minutes?
This is Rich.
Go ahead, Rich.
Yeah, this is Rich, and I'll second that.
All right, so with no additions or no corrections, all in favor approving last meeting's minutes? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, minutes approved. Pre-requested. Julie and Rhonda?
Hi. Thanks, guys. Rhonda and I got together after attending the last several meetings and worked on a list that we did send to all of you ahead of time. But basically, we were looking to come up with some small action items that we felt the select board could take to support the continuing conversation on diversity and inclusiveness. And these are all items that we feel are relevant to the select board and their role. And basically, we have a list of seven actionable items that we felt that you could, over the course of a period of time, take on. You know, a little bit getting done at every meeting gets us towards our end goal. The first item is really concerning the role of the select board. So the popularity of this topic seems to me that it provides an opportunity for you as a board to work together with each other to reflect on what your duties and responsibilities are. But it's also an opportunity to educate community members about these duties and the limitations that you have. And one thing that I have found in watching other boards and participating in other boards is to establish board norms and procedures and clearly identify them with some frequency. Hopefully, doing this would establish expectations of behavior during meetings. So I did include in this a list of norms that I know are being used by a couple of different boards within Polit itself. These don't necessarily have to be the norms that you would adopt. It's just a starting point. And those norms are, as a board, we will focus on agenda topics, be open-minded, respect each other, value different viewpoints, be responsive and responsible to our community, make decisions based on data and facts, listen to each other, be reflective, run meetings that respect time, have concise agendas, are transparent, and follow Robert's rules. So these norms are read at the start of every meeting, which essentially sets the tone for the meeting. I also think that it would be helpful. I know the board currently has some procedures that are already set, and maybe they're not always, you know, applied evenly or consistently. And so perhaps having norms that are read at the beginning of every meeting and procedures that are worked on maybe yearly would make it easier for everyone to remember what they're supposed to do. Like, for example, audience members must be, must request to speak to the chair and may only speak after being called on by the chair. All questions and comments should be directed to the chair. And then the chair could ask other board members to comment. And no one in the audience should ever address another audience member. The second thing is a municipal officer and employee training. So we recommend that you would support and budget for municipal officers and employees to participate in the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Training. And this would just be considered a standard set of trainings that anyone with a role in the town governance should take, similar to like the trainings that I know the new members have taken that were sponsored by Vermont League of Cities and Towns on your fiduciary responsibilities and voting processes. The third action item was to engage with other towns. You know, having lines of communication open between other town folks that have your same role is an excellent way to educate yourselves about what other towns are doing. And it's also a great way for you to contribute in innovative ways with other towns on work that they are doing. So it's kind of a win-win for everybody. The fourth item would be, in order to ensure that no one is left behind in any emergencies. So during Irene, and again in COVID, it's been kind of important for community members to be able to get information. And it would be very helpful if we could ensure that non-English speakers that are members of our communities would be able to get this same information. And so we may need to budget for translation services or apps or seek support and volunteers to get this accomplished. And in that same vein, having this information accessible in verbal and written communications. Actually, I'm getting ahead of myself, sorry. And the next item was information accessibility in verbal and written communications. So in community meetings, I believe Jessica brought this up several meetings ago, but it's inclusive and helpful to people that aren't used to government in general, that we explain acronyms as we are speaking so that everyone can understand what's happening. Like, we talk a lot about BLCT, and maybe not everybody knows that that means Vermont League of Cities and Towns. So that's one example. And then another example is, if we're using specialized language, it would be nice to explain that language. And so, for example, when I say white privilege, I mean that although a white person may be hardworking and has experienced hardships in their lives, none of these were directly and solely caused by the color of their skin. Rather, it means that our society ascribes positive attributes to a person simply because of the color of their white skin and ascribes negative attributes to people of color, thereby providing unfair advantages to white people simply by, because they are perceived to be superior to people that are non-white. Sometimes explaining specialized language can divert a fight where there doesn't need to be one because it's a simple misunderstanding. Sixth item is information accessibility. So I think it's important that we consider how community information is accessible to people whose primary language is not English. And that may be on the town website and in other warnings, town reports, et cetera. That, again, goes, we may need to budget for something like that. And that leads up to just kind of an updating of the website. So I would recommend, Rhonda and I would recommend that we budget and prepare for revamping of the town website in order to accomplish the above goals and some other goals that have been set by the board recently or at least discussed recently, such as having links to resources and organizations that provide assistance to community members, as well as asking other municipal officials to work together to kind of come up with a Local Government 101 section on the website that explains to people in town what their responsibilities are as taxpayers and townspeople, like when taxes are due, when dog registrations are due, things like that. And that would help to educate people on their role and our roles. We recognize that this is kind of a lot. It's a list of seven things. We don't expect you to do it all in one night. But I think that there are small action items that can be taken over the course of many weeks, and they're certainly not where this should stop. But we believe that we've shared ideas that will translate to concrete action and will support dialogue, attention, engagement, and action that will build an even stronger Polit. And I think I've covered everything. If Rhonda thinks I missed something, then she can, she does not, so that is all.
Well, thank you, ladies, for working on that and bringing that to the board. Does anybody on the board have any comments or questions for Julie or Rhonda? I guess, at this point.
Yes, I have my hand up.
Okay, I'm sure.
My question is, Julie, do you know how we could find out what languages people in our town speak?
I know we have, we do have some Spanish-speaking families. The school would know about any families that have children. So that's a starting point.
I, I, I think that these ideas that Julie and Rhonda have come up with are very nicely actionable items. And it sounds like we're taking up the first one tonight since we have norms and procedures on our, on our agenda.
Okay, good, thank you. Anybody else have any comments regarding these? They all seem, you know, like to help improve the system. To clarification, it's very important to make everything go in a, in a good, straight, forth manner. So I think that, like Julie had said, that this, these all action ideas need to be reviewed by the select board and to work out how we can implement them into our, into our system and how we can grow, grow as a board from, from working with these particular suggestions and more suggestions that we can evaluate and move on. Is anybody from the public, Kristen?
Yeah, Mike, this is Kristen. I just had a quick question, wondering if you as a chair or someone else, in an effort just due to the open meeting law, since the board can't all communicate on action items via email together, wondering if anybody, if you think anybody from the board might be good as a liaison? So a couple people could maybe work on figuring out a plan of attack, maybe on how the board might like to approach some of these behind the scenes? And then somebody could report back in between meetings? Just because, from my experience, I know it's kind of hard for everybody to discuss things, you know, between the two. So just a thought, if anybody or suggestion, I'd be happy to also help to delegate or assist in any way that I can.
Okay.
I'd be happy to be a liaison for any such discussions.
Is there anybody else that would like to join a two-person group with Jessica and work to be, work through these and bring back suggestions for the board to, to work through?
Mike, this is Rich.
Yes, Rich.
So I've got some, some Spanish-speaking families that work for us. Great guys, I mean, great families. In the state, at least once a month, the state has some folks that come down and talk with them in regards to, to whatever issues they may, they may face. From the state, from UVM, I mean, there's a, there's a lot of support for these guys. So I don't know what kind of support you think they may not have, but, but just to let you all know that they have a lot of support from the state as well. So maybe, maybe you should talk to some of the guys that, that, that work for us and find out what may be missing. And you can maybe close that gap. But instead of trying to create something without talking to them, I'm not sure that's, you know, very productive. And I can set that up, that conversation. If Julie wants to talk to these guys, or if Jessica, or whatever, if they want to talk with these guys, I'd be glad to, to, to set that up.
That, that sounds great, Rich. Would you like to be the second person on this group thing? You and I work together on seeing what the Spanish-speaking folks might need. Like, if, if any information on our website needs to be translated into Spanish, and maybe some of those UVM folks you're talking about could help us out as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And we can talk directly with, with these families as well.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so that sounds like, Jessica, you and Rich are going to work as liaisons to start going over this list. The two of you communicating to, to work through, picking points and figuring out how to integrate them into our, our system? Does that sound?
Sounds good.
Okay.
And I can bring up contact in from the state as well.
Wonderful.
The state has a lot of resource, though.
This is Frank, Mike.
Yeah, I see your hand. Go ahead, Frank.
I geeked out on the open meeting law a few times. And the open meeting law went overboard to extend openness and inclusion in the meetings. So the, the, the list may want to be cross-reference against the open meeting law, which is a law already, and may come up with some productive, some sort of a productive parallels where they would be able to integrate the open meeting law and see how that all fits together and see if the open meeting law is something that would need to be extended across the state and where all meetings would be, would be running a certain way. And so, but the open meeting law is something that, if you read the detail of it, is guaranteeing by law openness of any citizen who comes to participate in meetings, just to mention that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments on on this? Okay, it sounds like we have some positive feedback. And, and we have a, we have two members that are going to work on, on coming up to them and through the course of the next meetings, plural, that we will, we will attack each subjects and, and learn how we can integrate it into our, into our normal, normal operation of our, our business meetings. Thank you. Announcements, Kristen?
Yes, this is Kristen. Just one announcement from me, just to let everybody know that following the motion made during the last regular meeting on April 20th, Jessica and I consulted the state's guidance on the equal opportunity employment. And there was a lot of really wonderful resources there. And we have had Sean Ruck, our web coordinator, upload the equal opportunity employment statement to the website. So if anybody wants to take a look at that, that's a nice opportunity to head on over to the employment page of the town website. And maybe you'll see a position you want to apply for while you're there. So anyway, just letting you all know about that. And that's all for me. I don't know if anybody else had any.
Any other announcements tonight? Okay, zoning administrators report.
This is Kristen. There was no formal report submitted to the select board email address this evening.
Okay, Jessica, would you mind reading the planning commission report, please?
Sure, I've got it here on my other little screen. Polit Planning Commission met on April 26, 2021. Since the select board has voted to approve the new updates to the bylaws, myself and Jonas Rosenthal are now seeing them through the final steps so they can get to the appropriate people at both the Rutland Regional Planning Commission and the Natural Resources Board. Hopefully, this will finish our transition from a one-acre to a 10-acre town for the purposes of Act 250. With that done, the planning commission is now turning to the larger review of the zoning bylaws that was started last year. We're beginning by discussing issues related to zoning that have come to the attention of various commissioners and to the zoning administrator as he carries out his duties. And from these real-world concerns, we are planning to craft zoning updates that address the situations that people in Polit are actually having and what they want to do with their properties. That seemed like the best route for us to take. So we began to create a list of these issues, and we'll be addressing them one by one and adding to the list as we hear of more. So if any of you have any, like, something you wanted to do with your property, but you weren't sure about the zoning or a permit you had to get, and you were like, there was a lot of red tape, please contact someone on the planning commission and tell them because we are, we're collecting these sorts of, these sorts of stories right now so that we can work from, like I said, from issues people are actually having. So the first one that we're going to be discussing at our next meeting in, at the end of May, will be, we're going to be discussing commercial and non-commercial recreation because this came up this year, the issue of what is non-commercial recreation. And this may include, like, events because events, like large-scale events, aren't addressed anywhere in our zoning bylaws right now. We also wanted to discuss contractors' yards and other similar businesses and in which zones they should be conditional or permitted uses. And probably connected to that will be the related issue of owner-occupied versus non-owner-occupied businesses because currently our zoning regulations treat those two quite differently. So we're going to be taking up those topics first. That's the work, current work of the planning commission. Thank you very much.
And you also just put a message out that the planning commission still needs a clerk.
Oh, yes, it's because, because Kristen put that thing up about going to look at the employment opportunities. And that is one of the employment opportunities on there. And it would only be a few hours a month. Right now, we have, Rick Sassa is, is doing a hero's job at taking the notes while being on the commission. But that's quite hard. And as I'm sure everyone is aware, it's difficult to participate in a meeting when you have to be taking very thorough notes. And this is a paid position.
Okay, does anybody have any questions or comments for the planning mission? Okay, I guess not. Road Foreman, Keith.
Hi, everyone. Well, we've completed everything. We've been over everything with a grader at least once. We've spread a bunch of gravel in the past couple of weeks, spending some of the winter surplus money we spoke about earlier. I've been applying that mostly to roads we have already upgraded where we are shy on material to keep them graded and smoothed up good. So it's, it's going well. We'll be starting soon. I had hoped maybe this week, but it's going to be bumped till next week on the Herrick Brook Road project due to availability of a machine. So that's where we're headed, and things are going well. So we've been, anytime with these rainy days, we've been short-hauling gravel back from Glushion, stockpiling it at the town garage. And so it'll be readily available when we get ready to cover up down on the Herrick Road, so.
Okay.
We do have a stormwater permit through the state due June 1st. I forwarded that information to Julie today, and I'm sure she's on top of it. But you'll probably see that. I think it's due June 1st, so you'll see it perhaps next meeting, maybe this meeting. I don't know. And other than that, everything's going well.
Okay. What are we doing with the old dump truck, small dump truck?
Well, we have been using it, but, I mean, it's, we can, can go anytime if you guys are eager to get rid of it, I guess. Can put it out to bid. I don't really know what to put on it. I mean, the values are all over the place. I think if you're going to put it to open bid, we just put a minimum price we're willing to take on the bid proposal and see what comes in.
What does the rest of the board feel about, about that truck? Do we want to get rid of it right off? Or do we want to use it a little bit over the summer to, to go, or just, just wash our hands of it? Probably may be very well the best thing. So in case something breaks on it, it's, it's still a good running piece of equipment.
Mike, this is Rich. My feeling, my feeling would be just, you know, like Keith said, put a minimum bid on it and, and let it go as soon as possible. Drop the insurance off from it, just get rid of it.
Okay, that sounds like the best idea. Okay, that sounds like the best idea. Anybody else have any comments on that? You want to get something prepared for the next meeting so we can look it over and and put it out there, Keith?
Yeah, I can do that and I may get in touch with you, Kristen, if it's all right and. There's some municipal auction sites and stuff out there that, you know, are. Well, we, when Tim was involved, we sold the yellow Mac on one of them and it ended up going over into New Hampshire somewhere, you know. So it might be a little more widespread than local and may generate some more interest, so. You know, it would be be wise to put it on something like that as well, I would think, rather than just advertising it locally here, so.
Okay, sounds good. Does anybody have any questions for Keith? John does. Go ahead, John.
Yes, uh. You're aware that we got a approval of a. Scoping study for the. Bicycle and pedestrian and traffic patterns in the Polit Village. Start with. And we need to appoint. A municipal project manager. And the one recommended by Devon Neary, who's been working with us. From the Rutland Region Planning Commission was Eric Hall. And so I'm asking the select board to approve that we name him. Project manager for this uh. Grant. And then I can I'll sign the letter and or I'll get a letter typed up and uh. It goes to the Peter Pochop, if that's how you spell it, pronounce it. And uh. It's mostly a formality of having someone. Knowledgeable to help run the project. So I would ask for a motion.
This, um I have a question. Does anybody know anything about this Eric Hall or has everybody heard of him or?
Well, he works for the Regional Planning Commission.
Okay. Have you ever worked with him, Keith?
No, but I would certainly take Devon's recommendation. I've worked with him for years and. This Eric, it's I believe is one of their new hires, Mike. And um he'll he won't be working alone. He'll have the whole regional planning commission behind him. I wouldn't have reservations without going forward with it.
Okay, that sounds that's good to hear. So John has made a motion. Would somebody like to second that motion that we? That we uh. Attain have Eric Hall do our project managing for this project?
This is Jessica. I'll second the motion.
Jessica second that. Is anyone having more discussion? All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay. Motion approved. So you'll take care of getting that information out to move forward on that project, John?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The timeline is getting short on that also, Mike, just so they. They need to need to keep moving forward here or we're going to miss our deadline on our grant to fund this scoping scut study, so. They'll they'll take it and run here from from this forward, so they'll it'll be should be good. We'll be at least find out and then as a follow up on some of that, I'm getting a lot of questions about the West Polit side too. One is from Bruce or Jane who bought the fishing game building and the little building next to it there. He's got some work he's going to do there. We may even have to get involved with him there because he wants to pour new sidewalk and is asked about. Oh, potential for. Funding in the future down there around the monument, so um that discussion is starting on its own. Whether the whether we are on board yet or not, so. Certainly, we need to do something with that storm drain by Dave Hosley's and something with the intersection around the monument. And at least get new pipe and new structure out through. Where Bruce is working because we're not going to have a happy taxpayer if. Six months after he goes in there and does all that, we've got to put a new pipe down through there, so we need to. Need to cohabitate with him a little bit on that, so I've been in contact with him and and he's aware of it. But uh you know, we're going to have to, I think we're may have to do that sooner than later just to to meet his timeline.
Is there potential for funding for the culvert or is that something we're just going to have to do on our own?
I don't believe there is. It's it's part of our collection system for West Polit Village and we're probably not going to. I think the potential for funding there would come from our downtown designation through the Regional Planning Commission. And you know, it would be a revitalization type grant for West Polit Village or something, which would be sidewalks and. And similar to what we're working on at Route thirty right now, bikes and pads and with the rail trail and everything else that's over there. The the potential is there to uh to go somewhere with it. We we should be highly eligible in anything we apply for. Just because of that status and the status of Route one fifty three being a uh, you know, a state route number that. State road and and we maintain it, so that you know, that's a little more eligible when uh when we apply for stuff, so. And as everybody knows, the congestion around the monument there only only gets worse as the village gets busier over there, so.
Okay, so the next step would be to probably contact Devon and see what's what's available for this this side?
Yeah, he is aware of it and and we have started that discussion, but it was too broad. Painting with too wide a brush, I guess you would say, to try to do. An intersection in Polit Village and an intersection in West Polit Village under the same scoping study and grant process. We should work on one and the other and not try to do the two together, so and that that was their recommendation.
Okay, so so as two individual projects.
Two individual projects, yes.
So um Keith, do you have any sense of how soon after applying for and receiving the grant for the Highway thirty? Project, um we might be eligible to apply again for the West Polit intersection?
I I can't speak for sure on that, Jessica, but my this these are out annually. So if we're eligible, we can we can apply. So it it may not be this year, but potentially next year. I don't think if the uh if we get one, it it um. Excludes us from applying for another one.
I mean, I think we should go for it and try to apply for for one as soon as whenever it's open.
Right, well, we would have to start with a scoping study, just the same as we're doing right now. And then, you know, um that would do the groundwork and establish. Some form of a plan as to what we were trying to accomplish over there. It's it's really has been in uproar over there since the wastewater treatment plant went in because. Sidewalks in particular because for some reason, when they dressed everything up after all the infrastructure went in for the wastewater plant. They gave every individual landlord owner a choice of what they got for sidewalk. And some wanted to keep the old slate, some had concrete poured, some had blacktop, some didn't want any. So it, you know, if if you go down through there, you can see all the different changes and, you know, I think in the. What would have to happen is you might even do it in two phases and do around the monument and the rail trail and then extend it. To the south on one fifty three to the village limit and maybe you could even include new street, but uh. You know, right now, it's uh it's kind of a whole. I don't know, patchwork quilt through there, if you will, for lack of a better description, so. You know, I I think the planning process would take would be more involved than where we are at Route thirty and one thirty three.
So it sounds like we need to talk to Devon and get his input on it probably would be the next best move?
Yes, and and Devon is aware and um Tom Collard is, you know, he's he's our transportation rep and he's aware. And um Tom and I were actually, John Malcolm had this discussion with Devon the other night. And I I think our timeline for this year is too short to get it started now. Okay, so but I don't, I think it means probably potentially next year with a better start. We can uh plan ahead to to go forward and we may have some new ideas and. And a little better vision of what we're trying to accomplish over there by then, because we we have to start with Chris Taft and. Patrick Wilson and those guys from the state to really come over and and give us some guidance on this as to how we're going to control the flow of traffic in there. And then once that decision is made, then we can build the the pedestrian and the bikes and the parking and whatever beyond that, so.
Does anybody want to reach uh Jessica?
Oh, I just, sorry, this is Jessica. I just had a thought. Since it seems like we have to delay some of this stuff on the West Polit side. How how would it be if when we get those speed signs in, instead of putting them here on the on the Polit side, we put them. Um and in the areas in West Polit where the speeding is a concern? Because that could be an immediate way to address some of these things if we aren't going to be able to do anything else until next year.
That's that's a very viable solution to to help ease some of that. Does anybody? Want to reach out to Devon to see what his opinion is and what he can do for us about working on the west side also? Does to start the ball rolling, so to speak?
I can do that, Mike, if you want.
Okay, if you could do that, Keith, that would be great and we'll see.
And then, I mean, we're on the the Transportation Advisory Council, the TAC Committee, John Malcolm and Tom Collard and myself are on it. So we're meeting with Devon fairly regular and and this is has been a topic of discussion, so. So we'll just keep the ball rolling on it and and Jessica, I think that's a very good idea. Because any of our problem areas is where, you know, where we'll use those signs and and they're mobile enough. So we can move them around and and you know, the trouble spots certainly will get the most attention with them.
Okay, sounds good. Does anybody else have anything for Keith? All right, thank you. Assessor's report?
It's Kristen. There is no report submitted officially this evening from the assessor's office. However, an email was forwarded along to the board members and Karen Folder, who is our assistant assessor. Has requested that the board sign the grant list extension request letter. This letter is requested due to Lisa Wright's schedule lodging or lodging rather for other additional. Grand lists in other towns, so they are hoping for an extension.
John, do you have a comment on that?
I tried to reach you on both her cell phone and her home phone and didn't get a reply today. Wondering what was the problem and second, the letter that she's provided for us to sign says. Twenty eighteen grand list. I don't know if you noticed that, Kristen.
I did.
And Karen doesn't work on. Tuesdays, so I didn't contact her. I will tomorrow. And if they advise a change in that, we can get it possibly, so. Our signee can sign off. But I'd like to know really what happened. I don't think. I I wonder, I didn't contact Julie to know whether this would anyway affect our getting tax bills out.
Julie's hand is.
Do you have a comment, Julie, please?
Hi, so I do know, I don't know entirely what the reason is. I know that it was related to Lisa's schedule and she was just not able to get. Everything together in time to do it in time, um so she needed to ask for an extension. I do think like lodging of the grand list for some reason is a public meeting that no one ever goes to. But that may have something to do with the time or her not being able to do it on time. But the timeframe that they did lay out to me should not affect our ability. To get taxes collected um on September tenth, provided that we do. We come up with a preliminary tax rate. Um and then. It will be like the following week, they will be able to finalize the grand list. And then we would finalize the tax rate at the next meeting. And that would give me, it would still give me like ten days to print and mail all the bills.
Okay, so do we have to sign this before the next meeting, John, to to make everything go into?
We can give someone the authority to to do it. I think what happened, she used the an old template. For the letter, I assume we all do that on occasion. And uh so it says twenty eighteen instead of twenty twenty one.
Okay, so I mean, I could certainly sign it if the board approves it and uh and email it back to her. If you want, or somebody could be someone else that has my name on the bottom. So that's, I mean, that's doable electronically transfer that.
Okay, do you want, I'll contact Karen in the morning. How's that and?
Okay, and then she can just send it right to me if we vote on it tonight. Did you want to make a motion to sign it then, John, or do you want?
Well, I I wish we had more information uh. But I guess Julie has provided enough for I will make the motion to. To. Sign the request for a. A delay in in watching the grand list.
Okay, do I have a second for that motion?
Sure, this is Jessica. I'll second it.
Okay, Jessica, thank you. All right, so John, you're going to talk to him tomorrow and then figure out all the details of why and and then we'll uh. We'll uh vote on this right now and and uh go go forth from there, so. Any more discussion? All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay, approved. So once you get all the details worked out, John, you can have. Karen, send it to me and I'll sign it tomorrow and send it back to her.
Hey, thank you.
Okay, town clerk's memo.
This is Kristen. Um Deb is not in attendance at this evening's meeting, but she did. Send in an electronic memo for May fourth, twenty twenty one. Overweight permits are still on the table needing signatures, please. They're in the same folder that I have been using labeled documents needing signatures. Thank you. Vinnie Covino from Granville has agreed to be our IT computer technician professional due to John Freed's retirement. He visited the office last week to get a read on what needs to be done in the offices. I am due for a new computer this year and that is what he will be working on first. It is pretty critical at this point as I am still operating on Windows seven, which will soon no longer support many of the programs that I use. Other things that he noted were that there are some battery backups that are outdated. He will also be working on a secure wifi for the office while still offering. An open wifi for public use. The secure wifi has become more necessary in that we have more of our office devices using the wifi. Printer, postage machine, laptops, et cetera, which should not be sharing with the open sector. Daily operations are running smoothly, although land transfers have slowed down a bit. I will not be attending the meeting tonight, Deb.
Okay, thank you. Julie?
Hi, this is Julie. I just was remembering um Deb and I and talking about the computer. We're trying to recall the order. We had at one budget meeting, we had talked about having money in the budget every year just so we have a rotation of new computers. And I believe we had a list of who needed one when, but I don't remember where we're at on that list. And I didn't know if any of the board members recalled or if you could think on it and get back to us. It's fine. I just wanted to put that on your radar.
I I don't I don't remember who who we thought needed it next. Kristen?
Hi, uh Kristen, I remember.
Hi, Kristen, I remember at the budget meetings, there was the discussion that came up that it was a fact that the offices would start to need replacements and that the board wanted to budget for one for the next several years, but I don't know that there was a specific list of who would need what when. I know zoning administrator's office was discussed as was the town clerk, but that's, I don't know that there ever was an official list. Thank you.
It seems like it's, it's, Julie, has a, a new computer been bought during this budget that we're working in right now?
This is Julie. No, but Deb, um, Deb will be ordering hers and will, it will be ordered and paid for in this budget year.
In this budget, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Um, this is Jessica, I have a question.
Go ahead, please.
Um, do we know, who knows if this IT person that we've got, are they a town employee or are they someone we contract out with?
I assume that he's an independent contractor. Um, I, Julie, do you have?
He, he is an independent contractor.
All right, thank you. Would this be a person who we would, um, who we would have troubleshoot if we had say internet problems or something?
This is Julie.
He would, he would probably be the one that, that would handle anything that wasn't from our, our provider.
And so if we, and if we did need to, because I'm thinking ahead to when we might have sort of a hybrid setup where some of us might be meeting in person, but there might still be people calling in from Zoom. Would this be the person who would help us put our setup together with, you know, a screen or something like that that we might need?
I, I would think that he would be the first person that we would talk to about it. I personally don't know too much about his experience in this, but I believe he's been around for quite a while working on computers and stuff like that, so.
All right, thank you.
Frank?
Yeah, hi, I'm glad to Jessica's question.
Yes.
Can I comment? What I'm going to say is that this dual meeting, hybrid meeting process is something that should be going on across the state. It would be wise if the county planning commissions or the state were to step forward with some sort of standardized model. Uh, where all the towns are doing pretty much the same thing. And that was just a comment I would have. If, if we're going to rattle any cages, rattle Sally's cage because he's on the technology committee up in the legislature. Maybe they have something rolling already in that direction. I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Okay, so those are some viable options that we have and some, some input to if we can stay all on the same, the same systems would certainly make everything work a lot better, I'm sure. Town treasurer's memo?
Hi, this is Julie. Just two warrants to be signed today. Payroll totals for this meeting were $8,545.74. The account payable was $131,357.31. Monies from the general fund, $116,283.83. Highway, $22,939.88. Wastewater, $679.34. The highway or the general fund was this high because I did get the final, um, cash flows for the education taxes and this includes the final payment for this year to the Meadowwee District. Um, we also received $150 from the state for recording fees and $6,953 for the reappraisal fund. That's the per parcel payment that we get every year. It goes into a special fund for reappraisal so that if our town ever has to have, um, have a state mandated reappraisal, um, that money exists already to pay for it. The Vermont Agency of Natural Resources has sent a notice that the annual stormwater roads permit fee is coming due on June 1st. We are able to pay this online with the credit card, so if you would approve that at this meeting, I could get that done at any time before June 1st. And also, um, I did fill out a credit application on the excavator rental and forwarded that paperwork on to Keith so that he could get it to the appropriate people at the company. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Julie? John?
You're muted, John.
You're muted still, John.
I'm one step. Whoa, there it goes again. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, you're good, John.
Just a quick question on the lettering for the truck. It was put under repairs and maintenance. I wondered, do we capitalize? I mean, should that be part of the capital? Just a quick question.
I did think about that. Um, I put all of the, um, I put the truck and all of like the, the outfitting that we had to do under that. But I thought about the lettering a little bit differently because I considered if we had a problem with any of the lettering on our other trucks um, on our older trucks and we had to get those decals redone, it would just be repairs and maintenance. I could certainly change how it's classified. I just thought that that wasn't necessarily a capital purchase. It was more of a, of amendment to something we already had purchased.
Okay, thanks.
Does anybody else have any questions on the warrants?
Um, I have a question. Will Julie need, Julie, do you need a separate approval for using the credit card? Do we have to make a separate motion for that or just, um, say that you can?
Um, I think I would feel more comfortable if there was a motion just because we do have a policy that's like any, anything that's ordered by anyone, any official, I think it has to be under five or 600. I think it's 600. And this would be more than that, so I would just prefer to have a motion that I can go ahead and make that, uh, credit card charge.
All right, in that, in that case, this is Jessica. I move that Julie makes that credit card charge before June 1st.
The Agency of Natural Resources Stormwater Permit.
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a second on that motion?
Mike, this is Rich, I'll second that.
Okay, I, Rich must have a better internet service than you, John. Okay, so Rich has made a second.
He's got to stop muting himself.
Rich has made the second and Jessica's motion. All in favor, John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor of the stormwater permit? Now, what about the warrants?
Boy, I'll be quick and John will make a motion to accept the warrants.
All right. John's got a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Jessica, a second.
Okay, more discussion? All in favor? John?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Okay, warrants approved. Thank you. Any more questions or for Julie? Okay, thank you, Julie. Emergency Management Director, Kristen?
This is Kristen. I did not receive any reports, um, yet from Bob Morlino, so I'm sure we'll be getting some. Um, but friendly reminder to everybody, COVID reports are still being posted daily to the town, uh, to the Facebook page. So I know that would be on there if we got one, so I'll, I'll make sure to forward it along to everybody when I receive them and we'll likely have something to report at the next meeting.
Thank you. Police wider treatment. I have nothing to report on that. Um, everything seems to be going all right. We, uh, I don't know. Rich, I'd need to talk to Jill again to see if she had any ideas from, from that mechan, uh, structural engineer about converting one of those sections. If we could just get some ideas on what that would cost to have that study done, so we had a little bit more information. Have you talked to her at all about anything, Rich, or?
I haven't. Um, I can give her a call though and catch up with her the first part of the next week and, uh, and see what she's, see what she's dealing with down there if there's been any new developments and, uh, and just go from there with her.
Okay, sounds good, thanks. Older unfinished business, the radar controlled signs. Kristin?
Yeah, may I? Um, so this is Kristen, so the reason this is on here, hopefully for one of the last times for this, I say that every time, so here we go. Um, but so Elon City, who we have gotten a quote from, sent us the updated quote, which I forwarded along to the board members. Um, upon Keith's recommendation and request, I sent the quote along to him so that he could cross-reference and make sure that we couldn't obtain any of the parts for a lesser price from a state avenue and he confirmed that the prices look very good. Um, the way it works with Elon City is that they just need a signature from the select board to authorize the go-ahead of the order. They will send us the parts for the two speed signs and they'll only charge us once we receive everything and are happy with everything, which I just thought was very lovely, so. Um, so I just wanted to put it on the agenda this evening so that we could confirm that the board was happy with the way everything's going and if so, um, we could have Bob sign that when he goes in to sign the rest of the documents on behalf of the board and continue rolling this ball along.
Did we make that motion to buy them or we, we still are waiting on the updated quote?
Um, the motion was made, this is Kristen, the motion was made to purchase them pending that the quote was the same amount and it was. Um, so the motion was made, I just basically wanted to, just again, because email is so funny, just while we were in the public meeting setting, I just wanted to get some clarification and the, 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 what was discussed at the last meeting was that we wanted to confirm with Keith that we could, you know, the price was good compared to what he could get through the state. Um, so if all is well, if Bob could sign that tomorrow, that would be great.
Okay, that sounds good. John?
Coming back from Salem on 153 and entering Rupert and uh, at the old Maury farm, I see they have a speed sign. Is that similar to what we're getting? Does anybody know?
I'm assuming it's the, the signs that, that are in the quotes are, are a pole mounted sign of it kind of the same as most around. I'm not familiar with that one in Rupert, but I know there's been some in Manchester and et cetera and stuff like that that are all about approximately the same size. Do you know, Keith, or?
Not familiar with the one John's talking about, no, but they'll be pole mounted and, um, is there going to be installation instructions with these, I hope, Kristen? Because there is, uh, they're solar powered, right?
Yes, I believe so, from what I remember from the quote.
Um, you know, that, I think some of them are battery powered. These are supposed to be a little nicer because they have a solar charger on them and that should extend your battery life and you won't have ongoing issues with that, so. Um, I think the one down that John refers to has been there a couple of years now, I think, and, um, you know, it's one of the older versions. Ours should be a little nicer, a little brighter and just an upgrade from that, but very similar.
Okay, sounds good. So you'll take care of that paperwork, Bob? Good.
And, okay, this is Kristen, just to confirm, yes, it's a 14-inch solar radar speed sign with programmable message display and internal solar power regulator, cap, traffic data collection, analysis software with no subscription fee, Bluetooth and smartphone app and a mounting kit with a mounting bar. Um, for the low, low price, I'm just kidding. Um, but so it, that should come with instructions, Keith. And again, they seem like they're very focused on making sure that their customers are satisfied, so I can reach out to them regarding the mounting instructions and include you on that as well.
So if we could back up to the previous question, it's, it's probably quite a lot nicer if it does traffic counts and car counts.
Yeah.
Do all, do, get a lot of information out of it. We could know how many cars went through the, around the monument every day before seven o'clock and.
Yeah, and for those, um, for those who go through Manchester, I think it's more like the naughty and nice kinds that are in Manchester. Um, so the only thing that moving forward, the board might like to think about and with you, Keith, is who is going to sort of be in charge of monitoring that information. I'm not sure how that's all going to work, but there is this software um, and whatnot, so that's just something that you all might like to sort of consider.
Okay, sounds good. Other old, Tom Collard?
Yeah, uh, comment and reference to those signs, part of our traffic study is if we can uh, database that information on car count and speed. I, I think that would help us on our traffic study on the Polit side. And it also would give us a platform to help us on the West Polit side when we get ready to move forward with Devon on that one. So that would be very important if that database is getting collected, uh, and set aside for us as a town.
Good.
Um, this is Jessica. I see in the chat that Jennifer has a question.
Um, can you guys hear me?
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I, I'm just going to put in a vote for a sign in West Polit again. Um, I think from the, coming from Rupert, um, on that side of town, I just, you know, I just see people driving so fast through there, so I think if we could at least get one sign here, it would be great. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other older unfinished business?
Mike, this is Rich.
Yes, Rich.
So I met with Clarence Ritchie today at the West Polit property that the town owns. And he plans to start cleaning that up on Thursday and hopes to finish on Friday. He's going to, uh, he's going to dig the power back to the, uh, to where the meter is. Uh, he's going to cap the water off at the pitless, at the well and dress it all up real nice and seat it down. So hopefully that'll be finished by Friday.
That'll be great. Anything else under older unfinished business?
Like, yeah, there's that, this is Kristen. So what we had added at the beginning of the meeting this evening, um, the cellphone coverage concerns that was on the agenda from the last meeting, in essence, the board all have received emails from Mr. and Mrs. Ross sharing concerns about cellphone coverage. Um, sharing that they had heard that there are several different state initiatives to improve cellphone coverage and they have hopes that the board will consider these and continue to think about, you know, upgrading cellphone coverage in any way that they might have the ability to do so. So that was one item and then I'll say one more thing and then I will not have anything else to say. The other item for old business was the inclusion conversation, uh, continued with updates that Jessica had, I believe.
Oh, and I think I also had the update on the West Polit wifi in old business, yeah.
Okay, so the cellphone coverage thing, I, I don't know what, what our next step is to try. Is that something that ends up coming more from the? Is that something that ends up coming more from the from the state level than from the town level? But do we put pressure on? Does anybody have a? Kristen?
This is Kristen. So the town had joined the Communication Union District, um, the Otter Creek, I believe. So perhaps the next best step would be to reach out to them um, to see if what other, what they might have been working on.
Tom, do you have any comment on that?
From a Uh, no. I don't, but I can ask that question at our next uh Otter Creek CUD meeting.
Yeah, this is Jessica. I I was under the impression the CUDs were mostly working on internet, not cellphone coverage, but
It it your CUD is really a fiber for broadband, correct? Um, there has been, in the southern Vermont, they've been talking about Wi-Fi, which would would be through cell service, but the CUD is really designed to improve fiber, um, not so much um, cell service. Um, because fiber is just so more dependable. But I can also ask, you know, if they know anything in reference to uh I thought at one time that fiber was brought to that box at the firehouse. And that's why they wanted that at that box at the firehouse. Do you recall any of that? Anybody?
I believe you're correct, Tom, because we were both active in the fire department then and that was their whole push to to put those boxes in. But I don't know, it doesn't seem to hold true.
Uh, I, yeah, I'm still digging on that because I've had that feeling right from day one, so. But so I don't know if I'm gonna get you any answer on cell service, but I'll be more glad to look into it and report next meeting.
So Julie put a a message that maybe we should contact our representative Sally. So Kristen, could you send that um, letter from the forward that letter from the Ross family to Sally and and see if she has any direction that anywhere we can go with that to encourage?
This is Kristen. Yes, certainly. That's a great idea.
Okay, thank you. And Jessica, you said you uh went over to check out the Wi-Fi hotspot?
Uh, yeah, let me, let me get my little update on that. I went over to check out the Wi-Fi hotspot in West Polit by the wastewater plant. And um, I was able to connect to it in the parking lot directly across the wastewater plant. It had nearly full service, like five bars. And it was easy to, I tied, pulled up, I pit, I played off of YouTube, I went on a Discord server to message there. Um, I went and pulled up some webpages and those all worked just fine. Um, I also then went down to the the other parking lot, the rail trail parking lot right off the monument circle. And it does work there as well. It's just you only have about two bars out of five there, so it is working. So um, I think that our next, our next step there, and it is called West Polit Public Wi-Fi, if you search for it under the Wi-Fi list, I think that our next um step for that would be to publicize that it exists and to put up some signs. I'm surprised that the installers didn't leave any signs to put up because I thought they were going to. I'm wondering if they left some like inside the wastewater plant itself.
I don't know.
Anyone know about that?
I don't know. I didn't hear anything from from Jill, but do you do you have that contact information? I think I had, he called me once, but I don't think I saved his phone number.
Um, I don't have the contact information for the installers because they didn't call me. I have the contact information for the person, um, the like, the customer service person who initially reached out to me. I mean, I imagine that if they didn't leave us any signs, we could just get something printed. I mean, I'm thinking about the sign they have in front of the library, right, in Polit that says Wi-Fi hotspot here. I think ideally we'd have like two signs. We could put one on one end of that long parking lot and we could put the other one in the park, maybe even right next to there. There's that sign, the little brown sign that says you can park here. We could put one by that. And we could maybe put one in the parking lot that's right off the monument.
Okay, maybe, maybe you could work with Keith and and get some signs made from where where we get our road signs or something like that. I guess I I
Yeah, that'd be fine. And I'm I may also, let me, I have a note here of stuff I'm working on. Um, I might just reach out to Jill and see if they left anything inside there because she would know if they if they piled something up.
Sure.
To see if they left something. And if not, I can work with Keith to get something. I think also that we should put this announcement in the next um, Polit E-News to let people know this exists. And I don't know where else we might want to announce it, perhaps on the town Facebook page or something like that, so that folks know it exists.
Okay, yeah, if we can get it to to Sean, do either you or Kristen can send that to Sean to add it to the to the E-News.
Who is it, Kristen? You or me? You?
This is Kristen. I'd be happy to send an email to Sean and Deb requesting that it be put out on uh both of those avenues and perhaps I don't know if Sean is has found a place for announcements on the website. Um, but if that is the case, like having a banner up or something like that on the website, it could be announced there as well.
Yeah, because it's a really nice thing to have and I think that people should know it. Obviously, once we have signs, then hikers will be able to use it as well, so.
Um, this is Kristen. One other suggestion, perhaps something could be posted in the West Polit Post Office. Um, oh, yeah, that's a good idea. There's a bulletin board there with announcements and perhaps one could be hung there while when the signs are put out. So.
Yeah.
That would be good.
And I think the other piece of unfinished business was mine as well. I'm getting, oh, I see Tom, sorry, Tom has his hand up.
Oh, excuse me. Tom, go ahead.
Uh, Tom Collard, um, there's a bulletin board down there on the entrance to those rails of the trails. Um, that is a good, maybe for a hard copy or a plastic laminated paper. Um, that it's got quite a bit of information about the rails of the trails and I think that's kind of a public board, so that's an idea too.
I'm jotting that down as well. Thanks, Tom. Move on to my other old business or?
Sorry, Mike. I just want to confirm just for accountability sake. Jessica, are you going to work on the the hard copy post?
Yes, yeah, I'm gonna first see, I'm gonna contact Jill to see if the installers left any signs inside the wastewater plant. And if they didn't, I'm gonna work with Keith to get some kind of sign printed that we can use.
Okay, great.
So I, and when we do that, I can also do the hard copy things and post them in whatever places we need, including the West Polit Post Office and the entrance of the rail trail.
Great, so I will handle the electronic stuff and if you need anything else from me, just let me know.
Lovely, thank you.
Okay, now you're on to your second task.
Okay, the second one was that I contacted um VLCT, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, and asked for their guidance on um includes inclusion statements. They connected me with Abigail Friedman at Municipal Assistance Center. And she sent me their website where they have various resources. And these included two guiding documents. Um, interestingly enough, both documents that we'd already been sent by other people. Um, one of them was the Vermont League of Cities and Towns Declaration of Inclusion Template. That was actually forwarded to us earlier this week by Mara Hurst. Um, so I've seen that one twice now. Um, the other document, which is created by vermontrural.org, is the document that got us started on this whole thing in the first place, which Maureen Brown forwarded to us. The one that had suggestions for things like not using acronyms and youth members and things like that. Um, all of these, all of these resources, as well as others, are available on the VLCT website under slash equity resources. Uh, so Ms. Freeman, I asked um if they were going to be coming up with more guidance in the future. And here's what Ms. Friedman told me, quote, "The VLCT Board has established an Equity Committee to help advise us on how to assist members with additional tools and information. We hope to have the work completed later this summer," end quote. So I didn't get the impression that towns have to wait until later this summer to adopt statements. Um, or that the guidance available later will be very different from the guidance that's available now. I just got the sense that it might be more. They might have more stuff to help out towns at that time. But I also found the updated list of towns and cities that have already adopted a statement um, here in Vermont. And alphabetically, they are Berry, Brandon, Burlington, Essex, Franklin, Hartford, Johnson, Middlebury, Milton, Montpelier, Moretown, Pittsfield, Pittsburgh, Putney, Richmond, Waterbury, and Woodstock. And in addition, I recently read an article that's in BT Digger that said the Rutland Chamber of Commerce has adopted an inclusion statement. So, um, with that all in mind, I want to take just a minute here to propose that we do adopt an inclusion statement of our own. And I, at the end of this, I'm gonna make a motion, so just bear with me while I get through my three points. Um, I think that we should, that we in Polit should adopt an inclusion statement for the following three reasons. One, inclusion is actually a proud tradition here in Polit, which I've heard about over the past couple of months. Um, I heard from Mike Beecher, our chairman, some time ago about the various immigrants who came here to work in slate mines and how they were included. And I've heard a lot of folks here in this meeting speak about how they moved here thirty years ago or forty-five years ago or fifteen years ago and that they felt welcomed and included. And at the last meeting, I was asked and I said, hey, I feel welcome and included here too. Uh, this is our town's history. I think it's clearly one of our values. And it's also a value of the greater melting pot that is America. And so I think that as Paul, as Politers, we should be proud of this tradition and affirm it for the future. Two, inclusion will affirm our children. Um, I'm not a mother myself, but I have heard from some mothers in our town, as well as from educators in our school, that the school is working with many of these same themes this year. Um, they are working on inclusion as well. And that for the Select Board to adopt a statement would be very affirming for our young people who come from a variety of backgrounds um, and who are in the process, many of them, of exploring their own identities. I think strongly that we should set a good example for young people. They'll be living in a diverse world. And we should back up what they're already learning in school and support their own identities by adopting this statement. Three, inclusion is good for business. Uh, as I said before, the Rutland Chamber of Commerce has adopted an inclusion statement. According to the article on this, the Chamber of Commerce is concerned with declining population and shuttered businesses in Rutland County. And welcoming people from diverse backgrounds is important, they say, in attracting businesses and workers. They hope this inclusion statement will be one tool to give the county's economy a boost. Um, in our own town plan, on page nine, it says, quote, "A central factor in Polit's economic development is maintaining the character of the town that makes it attractive to new residents in terms of its school, its community nature, and its aesthetic," end quote. So inclusiveness is part of the character of our town that makes it attractive to new residents. It's part of the community nature. We've heard over the last few meetings from quite a number of our newer residents who value that about our town, who value its inclusiveness. Uh, the town plan also says that the Planning Commission and the Select Board must strive to both preserve the town's existing agricultural and business heritage and to promote the development of new small businesses and agricultural enterprises. So these new enterprises are undoubtedly going to come both from folks who already live here in Polit and from folks who are moving here from elsewhere. And an inclusion statement would make it clear that we welcome workers and businesses of all backgrounds. For these three reasons, I make a motion that the Select Board adopt the following statement, and this is the one that Brandon and a number of other towns have used. And I will, I will put this into the chat here in just a minute. "The town of Polit condemns racism and discrimination of any type and welcomes all persons, regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation, age, or disability, and will protect these classes to the fullest extent of the law. As a town, we formally condemn discrimination in all its forms and commit to fair and equal treatment of everyone in our community. The town of Polit has and will continue to be a place where individuals can live freely and express their opinions." Thank you. And I'm going to pull that up and wrap it in the chat so everyone can read it.
Okay, so you've done your research and you've written and that statement's prepared.
Yeah, I didn't write, I didn't, I didn't write the statement. This is a statement that um that was in the information from Vermont League of Cities and Towns and that a number of other um towns have used. And I'm just taking a moment to put it in the chat. And I have made a motion to um to adopt the statement.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to adopt that statement. Is there a second for that motion? Is there any discussion about her, uh, Jessica's motion? John?
I think we need to take more time to look at a variety of statements. There are several out there and I've written one. I'd be happy to share that after we complete the action on this motion. But I
I've got, I've got another couple of options as well, so.
Okay. I have, I'm all in favor of an uh of a statement. I, I happen to like mine pretty much, but I haven't presented it until now or when we get.
Well, I, I mean, I say go for it, John. Let's hear your statement. I've got a second statement also from the town of Johnson, so we can, we can, we can hear a bunch of these.
Well, we still have a motion on the floor to
But there's no, there's no second, so.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll have to we'll have to leave that as a as a motion that didn't go forward because of no seconds. So, John?
Okay, mine is an inclusion straight statement draft. "The town is proud of our long history of diversity and inclusion. We affirm our commitment to welcome people of all background, status, and identity to live, to work, and to visit our town. We stand for kindness, understanding, neighborliness, peace, tolerance, and respect and toward all, for and toward all. We stand against racism, bigotry, discrimination, prejudice, violence, and hatred in all of their forms. Together, we share a commitment and a responsibility for everyone in our town to be safe, honored, and valued."
Okay, thank you.
Are you, are you moving that? Are you making a motion, John?
I'll make a motion to have that as a statement. I think uh having a statement is important. We try on every possible occurrence to do the pledge of allegiance. As a Quaker, I'm not too much on taking oaths or pledges. But uh, I think a statement is important for the same reasons that you gave Jessica on uh prefacing your motion. So I'll make that motion.
This is Jessica. I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion made and seconded on the floor. Is there any more discussion? Well, I would like to say that I I do feel that that the town, it's a statement is very important to the town. But I think that not enough work has gone into it yet. And I think there's, there's a lot more to put into it and it needs to be reflective of all the townspeople. And and that's why I'd like to say that we we maybe should take a little bit more time and and to sort through more of these statements before we act on on the statement this quickly.
This is Jessica.
Yeah.
I think, I think that we've taken a lot of time and that we've had a lot of discussions and that they haven't really gotten us anywhere. And I think that John's statement that he has come up with, it's very similar to the statement that the town of Johnson put out. So again, it's a nice, it's a statement that says many good things and no bad things as far as I can tell. I don't see anything to object to in it. If we put it out as a statement this year and then next year some further guidance comes down from VLCT, we can change it. I feel that if we get together a Select Board-approved committee that is going to look into this, that there will be a lot of discussion, that there will possibly be raised voices and there will be contention and that people's voices will not really be heard. We've heard a lot of voices over the past couple of months. We've heard a lot of voices over the past couple of months. I'm certain that there are some voices here tonight that want to be heard. I don't see any harm in putting out a statement that says that we welcome everybody and that we love kindness. I mean, don't we? I, I feel that all those things that John said are very true of our town, and I think we should put that statement out there. That's my piece.
Bob, what do you have to add to the subject?
Well, I wasn't prepared to move on this, this soon. Um, I'm kind of, I have a lot of questions still on it and how to, how to represent our town, uh, how to represent all the people in our town. Fairly, I don't think there was anything, I didn't see anything wrong with John's, John's statement at all. Um, I just wasn't, wasn't prepared to move on, on something this, this soon.
Okay. And Rich?
Yeah, I mean, I feel that, I mean, this is, this is a, this is a really, I mean, a hot topic right now. And I think, I think to make a decision tonight, I mean, we just heard John's statement. I mean, everything sounded, sounded good in it. I'd like to, to read it. And I think more townspeople maybe should have an opportunity to read it, um, before we, you know, make a decision tonight. Um, again, it sounded good, but I, I think, I think that, you know, more townspeople should have an opportunity to, to weigh in on this, um, you know, one way or another. That's my feeling on it tonight.
Okay, um, John?
Oh, let the other people speak first, but I do have some remarks I'd like to make, too.
Okay, Julie?
Hi. Uh, this is Julie Mack. Just two, two things that I'm reflecting on. The first being, um, at several meetings and in several conversations that I've had with people in town, the only concerns that I've heard about, um, Polit adopting a declaration have come from a very positive place. I would like to acknowledge that. And, and the concerns have been like, listing groups of people. And the only concern that I've heard from people is that they would feel terrible if they listed twelve different group subsettings and missed the thirteenth, and how badly they would feel about that. Um, and I, I think that you can work around that in two ways. One is by saying, you know, including but not limited to. And then the second way is a statement that's more along the lines of what John had written, that just talks about all positive things and says that we welcome all. Um, and that we stand against hatred and intolerance. Um, so those are two possibilities. And then, in hearing everyone's concerns tonight about moving too quickly, I don't necessarily feel that acting tonight would be too quickly. Um, I agree with Jessica on that. But I will say, as just a point of order, you guys are not allowed to communicate behind the scenes with each other on items that are action items of the board, back and forth. But there is no reason that you could not all share your own versions of this with each other without communicating backwards, so that if this is something that is not acted on tonight, it is one hundred and ten percent ready to rock and roll at the next meeting. That's my opinion. And that's all I have to say unless anyone has any questions.
Mike, this is Rich.
Yes, Rich.
So, um, how would you get, like, like our email for the town select board? How could we post all of that on like a, you know, a Facebook page or something along those lines? So that, you know, everybody in the community can see what, what goes on, uh, with our emails. You know, letters, whatnot, just what's going on in the town? How would we go about doing that? Just so further discussion could take place there on that platform? I mean, is that possible?
I, I'm not, I'm not tech savvy enough, but I just see that the front porch forum is, is an option to some people if they choose to join. But-
I mean, maybe some folks would have some different ideas. You know, maybe there's, um, you know, we'd get a lot of good ideas. Um, you know, if it was open to, to everybody in town, as opposed to just this, this small group right here. Open it up to everybody in town. You know, I don't know how, how to go about doing that, but, but that's our responsibility, I feel, as elected officials. I mean, this needs to be, this needs to be town-wide.
Okay, thank you. Frank? Frank, do you have your hand up?
I had to unmute. Um, yeah, I think John's statement's a good one, and Jessica's second. So it's, it's up for discussion and, and would need to be voted on, of course. And, but I can't see any problem with in amending the motion to say that that statement will be put on the, uh, webpage with a mo, amendment saying that changes could happen to the statement going forward. So you have the statement up, but your motion is that you can change it. Okay, so it's, that wouldn't hurt anything. If, if that's what you're doing, you're just going to put it up on the webpage. Uh, and it's subject to change at the will of the select board. You could move forward with it. If you wanted to, or you can delay it. One or the other, it's up to the board, but I'd say that there's, that, you know, you, you can amend the motion to, to make some options within a certain amount of time to finalize it at the, at the very least. Uh, instead of keeping it open for months forever, who knows? Okay, so that, just put a time limit on it and do it, and I'm, I'm, I'm just going to shut up and say, thank you, bye.
Okay, John, go ahead, please.
Yeah, part of my reason, and I spent a lot of time on this, uh, wasn't to rush anything, because on the opposite, I think a community discussion, which obviously be focused around a statement, but just the discussion and the community participation, I think is even more important than a statement. But if we have a focus of a statement, that's, that's an important time. I was also very aware of statements that used a lot of negative words. I think this should, as has been said, a positive activity, and that we stand, you know, toward the sun and not toward the darkness, uh, so to speak. I also wanted to be very concise. And I tried to eliminate as, or minimize the number of lists. But I also, uh, thought it was important that, to transfer that it's everybody's responsibility, not the select board's, not anybody. And creating a better town, state, country, world, uh, it's everybody's responsibility, not a select board, not a small group. Um, I also don't like using badges of identities. I know it's important to a lot of people. I've, I feel this also should not only be a positive statement, but also a, uh, not a centrifugal one, where we spin out all our identities, that it's an inclusion statement. And so that's, that's the tact that I was taking. But I'm happy to, to, uh, discuss this for how many weeks it might take. But this was my starting point, and then, and that's what I did.
Okay, so right now we have a motion on the floor. Made and seconded to, uh, adopt John's inclusion equity statement. Is there any more discussion? Okay, John, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob? You're still muted, Bob.
Yeah, John, you, uh, there you go.
You're unmuted.
I'm not sure how I feel. Like I said, I think we're, I think we should look into it more, but, um, so I guess I'm going to say, at this point, I'm going to say no.
Okay, Rich?
Yeah, I feel that, you know, we need some further discussion, um, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote no on this one, for this, this, uh, vote.
Okay, so I'm the tiebreaker, and I know we need this statement for our town, but I don't want to rush into it, so I, I'm going to vote no also. And I want to bring this, put this back on the agenda for next week, and I would like written copies of all those, of yours. Your, uh, statement, John, and in the statements that you proposed, Jessica. If we could have them, so that we can review them more and, and act as soon as we can on this, but make sure that everybody in the community is well informed. And, and we're have a, go ahead.
Yeah, with these, um, so if we send in these potential statements, will they then be posted on the website so that the community can see them before the next meeting?
Mike, this is Rich.
Yeah.
Is that a platform, the town website, that, that everybody has access to? I know Facebook is like, I mean, most everybody has that. Is there any opportunities there to get it out and share it with folks on Facebook, or, I mean, how do you get the word out?
What, what's the best poss, potential site to reach as many people as we can in the town with options for statements?
This is Jessica. All the sites, some, some people aren't on Facebook. I avoid it as much as possible. Um, I would say post on Front Porch Forum, put it on Facebook. Does the town have a Twitter? No, probably not. Um, and put it on the website, if you wanted to reach everybody as much as possible.
I've never heard of Front Porch Forum. I'll have to look that up.
This is Frank.
Post there for like, you know, I need, I need someone to take my roosters.
Okay.
Okay, so if we were to post these, these, um, possible, uh, statements on, on that, then we can review them, and we can, and we can try and get as much input from the rest of the town as we can. Then we can make a more informed decision, I feel, to, uh, to go with this.
This is Frank.
Go ahead, Frank.
You, you, we, we have room on the post office, boards and boards, to post these, and, uh, and also, um, when we wanted to get information out on the fishing derby for the, uh, all the kids would go to, uh, it, it might be possible to build the list, get them to the school, and have the kids, from all the kids in the school have access to it and take it home with their parents, and then you get a wide distribution of, of the different language options. And, and, uh, because you really want to get out there, and I don't, I avoid Facebook for certain reasons. Uh, but the, um, so this would get it in the hands of people uh, by having a printed piece of paper that the kids would have, and it would go to their, go to, and it, it would, and it would be educational for the kids to see how this process unfolds and how the language would be selected. That's just all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay.
This is Jessica. I think that's an excellent idea. I don't know who we would talk to at the school about getting something distributed there. Because that would be a way to reach a lot of people.
Mike, this, Rich.
Rich?
Uh, what about, you know, drafting up a mailer? I mean, this is, you know, this is a, a, uh, very hot topic here. Uh, I mean, I think it would be worth, uh, possibly sending a mailer out to everybody. I don't know what you think of that, but, I mean, that's a ability.
I don't know how we could pull that off, and, and quite off, uh, I, I'm trying to come up with a, you know, the, the best viable option to, to reach as many as possible. I think school would be a, a good way to send, to have a message go out. I don't know of any other types of systems that, that do any, any, any kind of, um, informational-type posting messages. But I think that we need to, to come back to this next week with, um, Julie said a letter can go home with school. Julie, would you comment on that, please?
This is Julie. Hi, Merawi sends home a big blue packet every week, and I'm pretty sure that, um, the school is fairly flexible about things going into that packet. We would have to, um, create the letter ourselves and then, uh, make copies of it and get it to the school for any hard copies. They do try to scan, um, a lot of things home to parents in emails, so we probably wouldn't even have to make that many copies because they would just scan it and send it electronically. Um, Cheryl Chalmers is the administrative assistant, and Brooke DeBonis is the principal, and those would be the two people at the school that you would be able to talk to about that.
So then, our next thing would be if we were going to do something like that, we need to draft, we need to put something together right now that would have all the information necessary to get, to get out, correct?
Yeah, I, it goes out, um, I think it goes out on Wednesdays, so it would have to be, it would have to be done tonight to go out and next week's for you to even get anything back in time for your next meeting. Um, and I, I'm all for community input on everything all the time, but I would just advise the board to remember that you are all duly elected officials, elected to represent your community already. So you do have some power. Um, and maybe you're hesitating because you don't know what the right answer is, and then you can communicate with people and see if you can get an idea of what people feel like. But at the end of the day, this is something that should be drafted and adopted by the majority of the board, of the board.
Okay. So, let's, as a majority, as, as the board, let's decide how the next step should be so that we can, we all feel that we can acquire enough information so that we're satisfied to, uh, make a well-informed decision. Um, John, what, what would be your opinion on, on the best way to, uh, gather the information?
I'm not really in favor of the school thing, uh, this, I don't like having kids be part of a political discussion. Um, we got into that a little bit a few years ago, and I didn't think it was fair to the kids or, or, uh, take up different agendas. Um, I think this discussion could be used at the school for other reasons other than, what we're talking about. But I think we got to find out what people are, are thinking, and, uh, that's what I said. I think that process is as important as a statement is.
Okay, Kristen?
Yes, this is Kristen. So just, um, after listening to a couple of concerns, a reminder that in something that goes out in the mail to every resident every year, it's called the Town Report. And in that Town Report, it includes how the select board meets and when, and it includes instructions on who to contact in order for assistants to become involved, which would be myself, um, as well as the frequency in which the board is going to be meeting. And in addition, every two weeks, when agendas go out, they're posted in several different areas, both online and in paper copy, and these topics are included. two weeks when agendas go out, they're posted in several different areas, both online and in paper copy, and these topics are included on those agendas. And for example, tonight, we have twenty-six participants, which is a larger number than has usually been seen, and I, I believe a large part based on feedback that has come through to the board are folks who have seen that these topics are coming up. So I did just want to highlight that um to the board that that the, in terms of getting out there to people, I certainly think that we could encourage more people to get involved and speak out, but I do think that the board and the town are doing a fairly ample job of making sure that the opportunity is there for people who do wish to get involved. Um, and then the additional thing was just that I've been doing some research on my own too, just so that I can be an informed participant and uh resource for the board, and it is true that when the board adopts something, it is the board's responsibility to hold themselves and the community accountable. So while it's so important and appropriate, I, I just worry about it getting a bit disorganized if the call gets put out for anybody to put a statement together. Um, I just, I think that it's great. I, I don't want that to be mistaken for me feeling like we shouldn't get people involved because absolutely one hundred percent, yes, I just worry that the organization of it all will cause the can to get kicked, so to speak. Um, so thank you. That's just all I had to say on that.
Um, I have, I have a suggestion, but I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Go ahead, go ahead, Jessica.
Oh, no, I, so I think um, given that John's statement had a lot of good feedback, I mean, I hear, I heard from every select board member saying that this statement seems positive, right? I, I'd like to withdraw the other statements that I've suggested, and I think that what we should do is that we should is that we should um post, since John's statement seems very positive to everyone, I think that we should post it on the various places that we suggested posting it and just send out a general call for anyone who wants to to comment on whether the town should adopt this or whether there should be amendments to it to do so before the next meeting. I, I do agree with Kristen that a lot of people have already commented to us. I mean, I I, we got emails from, official emails to the select board from Eleanor Hayes, Mara Hurst, Dan and Lori Brooks, Harley Cuddy, Janet Byerline, and Jay Lubke. So, I mean, a lot of people have already contacted us officially through email, and many people have spoken in person. So I think that if we put out a call over the coming month for anyone who wants to, to to email the select board or to come to the, to come to give their comments in person at the meeting next month, I think we'd get a large portion of the town who cares about this issue to you know, if, if we post on the website, on Facebook and Front Page Forum, I think we'd get a lot of engagement beyond, I mean, obviously the people who are already engaged. So that's what I'd suggest.
Okay, so is the board satisfied with, with posting having it at, at, it's going to be an agenda item for the next, on the next agenda, and we'll post John's statement that we will, we'll be discussing and the, this inclu- inclusivity statement and um and then we can uh we can move forward from there. Is everybody in favor of that? Okay, seem to be, seem to be every, I, I don't hear any naysayers. So I think that will be the next, that's the next course of action. We'll get it posted on all those. Everybody can have time to review it and and understand it and, and we'll, we'll bring this up again at the next meeting. Anybody more else have any more questions or comments on this subject?
Mike, I have a, a thought.
Yes, please. Go ahead, Kristen.
This is Kristen. In an effort to streamline uh with the board, like for me to include John's draft statement in the minutes, um in doing so, that would have it posted to the Facebook, the website, the e, e-blast when it gets sent out the email and also be posted in the post office.
That sounds like the, a very good option. Is everybody else okay with that?
I think that sounds great.
I, I have no problem with it. I think we need a little introduction so the public who may not un- know where we're coming from or why just a little bit of a preamble would be helpful. Uh, I'm willing to design one if that's okay.
Um, yeah. I like that. Since it's your statement, John, I think it would be great that you would make a little preamble.
Um, and then Mike, the, the other thing that I had a thought on was just that, just as a friendly PSA, um, an observation is that, you know, the municipal government level is a offshoot, a trickle down of the grand picture of government, and while it may seem uh head-scratchy when things do take a while, I think that it is ultimately all for good reason to make sure that checks and balances are being looked into. So, um, I know just a lot of people are fresh to these meetings, which is so wonderful, and it may seem confusing as to why things do take a little while, but it is it is all reassuring. So just wanted to share that just because a lot of feedback and communications that I've had from people to me are wondering why things take time and why processes go through the way that they are, and I just feel that if it were me sitting as a newcomer, it would be helpful for me to hear that too. So thank you all. John, I will hear from you about the preamble. That's all for me.
Okay, thank you. All right, so this, this discussion on this is closed for now, and we'll go to new business. Is there any new business? The town hall usage?
Yes, this is Kristen. So um I forwarded this all to you. Brooke Hughes Muse has reached out to the board in regards to the potential of her using the town hall auditorium for yoga classes as she has in the past. Um, she reached out to Deb with this request to forwarded it along to myself so that the board can review and discuss. I know that previous requests had been um replied to with non-affirmative action just due to the, the outlook of COVID. I know that the governor's restrictions are looking to change come July, but I think that's still to be determined, so the board's uh input is requested on that.
Um, uh, this is Jessica. I think that um all sectors of business, including public meetings, as of May first, have gone to what's called universal guidance so that they can be held without any really special guidance about health. I think that the requirements are um, it's the same as it would be for a retail store, right? That people are masked, that they, that they have options to wash their hands and that they maintain spacing. But other than that, most, most businesses, and it specifically did include public buildings and public meetings as of May the first, are open a little bit more than they were.
John?
Uh, I've got a printout right here that we printed out this afternoon about indoor gatherings. It's about three sentences. Do you want me to read it? Uh, or just whoever uses the town hall has to abide by, who knows what's going to be happening in July or August uh when she's be using it. But anyway, as of today, or as of the first of the month, for indoor gatherings, there can be one unvaccinated person per a hundred square feet up to a hundred and fifty unvaccinated people, whichever is less, plus any number of fully vaccinated people. A hundred square feet is about the side area of a big sports utility vehicle. If only fully vaccinated people are at the gathering, no one needs to wear a mask or steer, stay six feet apart. If anyone at the gathering is unvaccinated at higher risk of severe COVID nineteen or lives with someone who is at higher risk, then everyone needs to wear a mask and stay six feet apart. There are different regulations for outdoor gatherings. But I think if we stipulate that whatever is the guidance at the time that Brooke wants to use it for yoga, that she has to abide by, by that guidance.
That, that seems good, and I'd also think that it would be appropriate if, if she was to you know, spray down and wipe down any, any contact areas on, when she was leaving the uh you know, any, any areas if they, you know, uh, the bathrooms, the doorknobs and stuff like that and chairs if they were sitting in, or if they, you know, if they were to bring their own masks, mats or something like that, that would be much better so she could but it seems like uh it's it's a reasonable option if, if we can follow the guidelines and stuff, in my opinion. So what?
I have a quick thought, um, which I volunteered to do. So there is the auditorium rental agreement application um, which I would request that Brooke fill out as well, but I'm wondering, the board, they think it's a good idea to edit that in accordance with the ever-changing state guidelines, just to add in things like those renting are responsible for ensuring ample cleanup after each use and that those renting are responsible for following this, the current state guidelines with, due to COVID. Um, it could just be like, I, I could propose it and write the little draft and send it to you all. I just, might be a thorough way to just try to make sure that the i's are dotted and t's are crossed since they have to fill out a, a rental application anyway.
That, that seems very appropriate.
Okay, I will, um, I'll work on that and I will send it to you all. And depending on what the board wants to do currently in response to Brooke, um, I'm happy to communicate with her as well, with whatever you decide.
So is the board okay with Brooke doing that as long as she goes by um the guidelines that we just discussed?
Yeah, I think so.
Do we need to put that in the form of a motion or is it consensus okay or?
Consensus okay with John?
Yeah. Yeah. So I, I guess we're all in favor, we're all okay with a, with, with a consensus that Brooke is Brooke is open to use, to rent the town hall as long as she um meets the, the set forth guy, guidance. Okay. Was there anything else under new business, Kristen?
Um, yes, there is. I forgot to mention this earlier, but so Frank Nelson had sent an email to the board, which I had forwarded to the members. It was about um storage, uh sorry, records, storage. Um, he, Frank messaged me reminding me about that and was wondering if that could be discussed.
Okay, Frank, do you wanna comment on that, please?
Yeah, one of the things with the uh UBL, UBL change is that we were missing and it might have been Tim's laptop that crashed, but we were missing the minutes uh copies of the newspaper articles or warnings. Uh, we had no record of the process. It's someplace, but we don't know where it is. We think it could be in that file cabinet and back at us the table where the select board would meet uh because Tim was going into that all the time and everybody else, and I always wonder what was stored there. But there should be a, some formal process, and Kristen was commenting that she doesn't have any direction on what we need to do with what type of record to store it for a long time because it's a record of the town. And it can't be just digital. It would, some stuff has to be paper. And if that stuff needs to be kept in some capacity in the vault in case of fire, uh, that's just, you know, something that the select board has to discuss and make up their minds on. Um, Kristen has some input potentially on that. Thank you.
Um, okay. This is Kristen.
Go ahead, Kristen.
John, John did add to the, to the group earlier, he sent to me um that the town clerk did confirm that minutes, meeting minutes are all kept in the vault in the town uh clerk's office, and I did just want to confirm that I have gone through the filing cabinet. Um, that is behind where the select board has always sat in the town hall and while there's some documentation, there's not all of it. I will say too, on behalf of the select board, I do have an external drive where I do backup files um following the crash from the laptop, and a lot of things are uploaded to Google Drives and, and things like that. Um, so I think what Frank was referring to when he said that I didn't have direction, I had responded um to that email just stating that I would be open to any more formal guidance from the state or from the board.
Okay, and I think that some of the, some of the record keeping for the town is Deb's responsibility too. So we could touch base with her and see where she she stands on it. And John, you have your hand?
Yes, I think uh, you know, that the records are kept in the vault. They also have a binder of all the warnings that ever went out and in the newspapers, so they're available in the vault. Um, they aren't digitized, obviously, but they are safe and uh and somewhat available. They're available. Yes, clerk just corrected me.
Jessica?
Um, I don't want to take up a lot of time tonight because I see we're overtime, but I think that going forward, it would be a good idea for us to adopt a town digital records policy. So I, we don't have one, and I'm sure we could find best practices on that from VLCT as well. You know, just the stating how long we need to keep digital records and so on and so forth.
Okay, we can look into that some more. Is there any more new business? Okay, public comment. Does anybody have any public comment tonight?
Oh.
Um, Mike?
Yes.
This is, this is Kristen. Real quick, um, I did have under new business, the operating norms and procedures. Those were suggestions that the library board um had in some discussions, and uh one of the folks from the library board had sent me these operating norms that they do. I know that we're over time and I would be happy to add that to the next meeting agenda and in the interim, send it to the select board members so that you could all have a chance to review it.
That, that would be great with me. Is everybody else okay with that?
It's essentially just like a very friendly checklist about things that we could say at the beginning of every meeting to just remind everybody of how to be kind and efficient. Um, so I'll send it to you guys and add it to the next agenda. Thanks. That was all for new business.
Thank you. Now we're on public comment. Let me know if anybody has a hand up. I'm trying to find.
I don't see any, Mike.
Okay, if nobody has a hand up for public comment, then we'll look for a motion to adjourn this meeting for tonight.
Move, we adjourn.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll second that, Mike.
Bob will second that motion. All in favor, John? I think that was a yes. It looked like a yes. Jessica?
Yes.
Yeah, Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night.
Everyone, good night.